All right, wow. We did have, like, the power was in and out today. We did have some challenges around here, but. All right, things aren't working entirely according to plan here at the moment, but I will call this meeting to order for the regular meeting of council for November 4th at seven o'clock. My name is Mike Little, Mayor of the District of North Vancouver, and so the pleasure falls to me to welcome you all here to this regular meeting. Council, we have an agenda that's been circulated. Are there any errors or omissions from the agenda as presented? Bearing none, will someone move adoption of the agenda? Moved by councillor Forbes, seconded by councillor Back, prepared to call the question. All in favor, contrary minded motion carries. We, before we get the meeting fully underway, we'd like to start the meeting in a good way with acknowledgement. Councillor Back has volunteered to do that for us. Councillor Back.
Thank you, your worship. We would expectly acknowledge the original peoples of these lands and waters, specifically the Slaywood Tooth, Squamish, and Musqueam, on whose unceded ancestral lands the District of North Vancouver is located. We value the opportunity to learn, share, and serve our community on these unceded lands.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other open mics, so I don't know what's causing the echo. All right. Oh, there I am again. Well, sort of me from, was it six, six, seven, eight, 10 years ago? Twenty fifteen, I think, is when that was. Okay, well, council, we do have a set of meeting minutes that have been circulated in the package. They're from the October 7th meeting. Are there any errors or omissions from the October 7th meeting minutes presented? Bearing none, they've been moved by councillor Murray as their second around the matter, seconded by councillor Back, called a question. All in favor, contrary minded motion is carried and the meeting minutes are adopted. At the front end of every regular meeting of council, we reserve a period of up to 30 minutes for input from the public to speak on matters of concern to them. Each of the speakers has allotted three minutes' time to come up and speak to the council. At this point, I only have a list of, I have a list of six speakers. We could probably handle a few more than that. So I will check in with the room when we get to the end of the speaker's list to see if anyone else would like to add their comments. Speaking to agenda items this evening, first, we have Hazen Colbert joining us here virtually. Mr. Colbert, can you hear me? Oh, actually, I think he's not over as a panelist yet. Oh, okay. Well, we don't see him as an online participant at this time, so we will circle back and check back in with Hazen Colbert before we're done. The next speaker I have is Ted Bancroft, joining us here in person. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have three minutes to address the council. Please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. My name is Ted Bancroft, and I'm here speaking as a treasurer of the Blue Ridge Community Association in support of Agenda Item 8.5, requesting a public inquiry into the North Shore wastewater treatment plant. The BCA is a member of the North Shore Neighborhoods Alliance, which we share a common cause with respect to the need for a public inquiry. The BCA Board of Directors represents the hundreds of homeowners in the Blue Ridge area. Earlier this summer, our board unanimously approved and wrote to the DMV council requesting that DMV formally request the premier to conduct a public inquiry into the treatment plant. You are no doubt aware that the section 764 of the Local Government Act allows the premier to request the inspector of municipalities of BC to conduct a formal inquiry into the many issues surrounding the treatment plant. The inspector has sweeping powers of investigation. Several of the issues regarding the treatment plant are identified in the Agenda Item 8.5 and are summarized as follows. Firstly, massive cost overruns and delays. Secondly, governance issues of Metro Vancouver and the need for public accountability. Thirdly, the disproportionate and unfair financial cost of the treatment plant being shouldered by North Shore residents. And as structured, fourthly, as structured, the independent performance audit will not provide necessary answers to the questions the BCA board and our BCA community have asked. As you are aware, the total cost has escalated from the original budget of 700 million to 4 billion, not including the remediation of the current treatment plant site. We are hopeful that lessons will be learned from the treatment plant's experience and will not be repeated in future Metro Vancouver projects. As mentioned in the Agenda 8.5 report, the city of North Vancouver on June 17th, 2024, passed a resolution calling for independent public review. An announcement on September 9th, 2024 indicated five further municipalities, New Missminster, Surrey, Richmond, Maple Ridge, and Burnaby, are bringing motions to their councils calling on the BC government to carry out an independent review of Metro Vancouver's structure and governance, as well as undertake a formal inquiry in all aspects of the treatment plant. The Blue Ridge Community Association Board of Directors is hereby adding its voice to those of the six municipalities already on record by asking this council to vote in support of requesting the BC premier to call for a formal public inquiry into the treatment plant. In closing, I would like to add our appreciation for the initiative and courage shown by councillor Pope in moving this motion. We urge his passing by the council and rapid action in implementing it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Respectfully submitted, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next speaker I have is Ian Rose Innis, joining us here in person. Welcome, and when you're comfortable, you have three minutes to address the council.
Mayor, councillors. On Friday, I wrote a letter to council, and I believe it was circulated. I'm just wondering if everybody got a copy. I'd like to introduce myself briefly. I'm a retired professional engineer. I've worked for Metro Vancouver on a number of, on a number of wastewater projects. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering and a master's degree in environmental engineering specializing in wastewater treatment. I undertook, before I joined Metro Vancouver, I undertook, I led the design on this wastewater treatment plant. Can we get the screen up, please? In Johannesburg, South Africa, it was about twice the capacity of the landscape treatment plant. And we started off with a preliminary design, which took a small team about a year to produce. And then we went into detailed design. That took another two years. And then the contract, where we went out to bid on various components of the project, including, and that involved 13 separate contracts based on the detailed design, and that design was so detailed to the point where every reinforcing bar in the project was measured, was decided, we decided how it should be built, and we then measured it all, and the contractor could therefore price very accurately everything that he had to do to build the structure. We also undertook a lot of risk management exercises to try to reduce the risk, particularly in this particular case, I'll give you an example. The, as you can see, these tanks that you're looking at, the rectangular ones are about 145 metres long each, about 45 metres wide in concrete. And they have very large concrete floors, and you cannot pour concrete in large pieces without it cracking. But what we felt we did was, we actually decided to build the floors a bit bigger because the jointing in the floors was a critical issue. And we then, it cost more money to put additional steel in the floors to prevent cracking, but we reduced the amount, the risk of the joint failure. Joint failure was further reduced by quality assuring the supplier of the joint sealant was put in. This is the example of a kind of project I would like to see used, procurement I would like to see used going forward, particularly related to the iron and wastewater treatment. My contention here is that by forcing the Metro Vancouver to use a public-private partnership that increased the risk significantly of having a project failure. And that, there is the methodology I've just explained in detail, is a much lower risk opportunity for procurement of these kind of highly complex projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ian Rose Innis, and thank you for spending some time with me in September, going over some of matters related. The next speaker I have is Betty Ann Oster, followed by Dean Ogden, joining us here in person. Welcome, and you're comfortable, you have three minutes to address the council.
I have a rather unique topic. What I'd like council to consider is using goats to clear invasive weeds in the forest. At my house in the Dollardshire area of Depeau, my property backs onto district property, which has a huge amount of blackberry bushes, ivies, which are actually strangling the trees. We're fighting to save a western hemlock in my neighbor's part of the the district property, and the goat, the actual goat is a perfect animal to use to clear these invasive weeds. They will munch their way through just about anything. Their mouth is very narrow and strong, so it can get onto branches and defoliate these. It can even eat blackberry bushes. They're very fond of those, which is quite amazing. They'll eat the prickles. And I think that to use them instead of herbicides is very important because particularly in our section that needs to be cleared, there's a creek running through it, so you wouldn't want to spray herbicide there, and the Sherwood Park Elementary School playground butts up onto that property. So you, again, you wouldn't want to put the children at risk, and this is a much safer way to deal with the problem. And people are very happy to see these goats when they arrive. I've talked to some of the breeders and people who take some goats around to his properties. There, I spoke with Kayleigh Chase up in Kimberley today. She's had her goats in Kamloops. She's had them in Calgary, Kimberley, and Fernie, all over the place for the past seven years. And she says they're always very well received, so that they're not only good for the environment, they're good for the people who enjoy watching them work away. It is a bit of a complex thing to manage, but I think it's worthwhile in the end. As we know, herbicides are very costly. A roundup costs monstrosity of billions of dollars in legal suits for, you know, the health damage it has done to so many people and causes of death. So no one is happy to see the herbicide applicator guy show up, but people are happy to see the goats, and they do a terrific job. And I was hoping that you would consider using these in the future because the invasive weeds are really taking a lot of moisture out of the soil, drying out the trees, and we've got a huge risk of fire in the area. We've got a lot of, in our particular area, we have raven woods, and it has a lot of people there that use the trails, and the odd time you do see cigarette butts on the trails. So it is a concern, and I think we should maybe consider this. And so thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Betty Ann Oster. The next speaker I have is Dean Ogden, followed by Chad Friesen, joining us in person or virtually. Yeah, that's fine. Yep. So Chad Friesen, joining us here in person.
That is me.
Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Mike Little and councillors, and thank you for, thank for allowing me to speak here today. I want to speak about the, the, the DMV Kilmer Creek Phase Two and to the, specifically the creek move. And the, and the fact that the feral has had negative impacts on our community. My name is Chad Friesen. I live at 364 From Road, and one of the residents that just recently, October 19th, was flooded again for the second time after the November flooding 10 years earlier. Obviously, there's financial and emotional impacts to that, that are still being felt today. Since October 19th, I've actually spoken to friends and neighbors on From Road between Croft and Frederick, all of those neighbors having the the creek within their immediate property, and we are a unanimous signed document requesting that the, that, that creek be moved from the property as per the, the DMV's Kilmer Creek Phase Two project. That was, that was previously postponed. And the reasons, there's multiple reasons for this. It's, I think, one is, one is the ease of which this project can actually take place. It, the Kilmer Creek Phase Two plans are already complete. The project was actually originally set for August 2022, but it was postponed two weeks prior to beginning, just just for, I'm not sure of the reason. We, we, we've also had multiple near misses since that, since the, in the last 10 years. And without the DMV's Kilmer Creek Phase Two move, this will continue, even, even actually as we saw today. The creek overran its banks just today. We also know that resources during floods are scarce, and, and North Vancouver's multiple areas normally deep COVID has hit at the same time as Linn Bell is hit. And, and having this preventative work completed will allow the District of North Vancouver resources to help other areas during these events. Obviously, there is a financial impact to this. It's, but we, we would love to see this this go forward as the, as the cost community kind of trumps that. All but an area, all but one block have been completed. It's, there's, there's really, there's really just the, between Croft and Frederick, there's still an issue. There are significant benefits that are identified in the Kilmer Creek EAP. This report remains valid while the urgency due to increased frequency of significant weather events continues to increase. And honestly, I could go on, but it, but my, you know, it's, there's additional points, but I truly believe that we all do realize that this work needs to take place. And I just ask that it be moved up to the capital, the 2025 capital plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Chad Friesen. And next, Dean Ogden, joining us here in person.
Hello everyone. My name is Dean Ogden. I'm one of Chad's neighbours. I live in the quarter of Croft and From, where the Kilmer Creek Culvert enters our block. I'm also asking DMV's Kilmer Creek Phase Two projects along From, between Croft and Frederick, be added to the work to be completed by this August 2025. Like Chad, our family still deal with financial and emotional impacts of the flooding from 10 years ago, 2014. This year, October 19th, our home stayed dry, but only by a hair. If not for pumps, sandbags, and incredible help from both neighbours and strangers, our home would have also flooded. The Kilmer Creek Culvert enters the northwest corner of our property and angles the flow of water directly at our home. After the 2014 flood, the DMV attempted to provide support to the creek and added protection to our home by adding riprap boulders. However, these are now falling, failing, and falling into the creek bed. These falling boulders have raised the base of the creek bed and are now forcing water upwards, closing closer to our home and our neighbours' homes. In fact, with this morning's rain, we were faced with near-flooding conditions again. It is clear that our block is the weakest link. Other areas of the creek bed are functioning as they were designed to, but our block cannot withstand the increased frequency of significant weather events. As Chad has said, we are united in our request for this work to be completed August 2025. Thank you very much, everybody, for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Dean Ogden.
We asked staff to report back to council on the remainder of this project.
Speak to Phase Two of Kilmer timing.
Staff can report back to council in terms of the Phase Two coming piece and then potential next steps, so we'll report back to council on the matter.
Timeline, when you'll report back to council?
We can report back as part of the 2025 budget discussions. That's probably an appropriate time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we still have some additional time. Would anybody else like to address the council, either here in person or virtually, by raising your virtual hand? Okay, not seeing anyone, and I will say that Hazen Colbert, who was at the top of the list, I said I was going to come back around to them. I've since received a text from Mr. Colbert saying that his power is off at his house, and he's not able to join the meeting virtually this evening because of that. So I hope that gets resolved. Actually, probably a good time to, maybe we can make some comment about the current wind and rainstorm that we had today. Go to Mr. Cohen, if possible.
Yeah, sure, Mayor Little. So as many are aware, a windstorm hit the North Shore earlier today, and gusty winds are expected to continue throughout this evening. At this time, we're aware of the impacts that include several road closures due to downed trees and power lines, several intersections without power, and many are operating on generators, and we know that at least four houses have sustained damage from falling trees. District crews are continuing through the night to respond to the windstorm impacts, and BC Hydro has advised that there may be some areas of the district that may not have power this evening. Thanks.
About a third to a half of our households, and at one point it was about 15,000 out of 32,000 households had no power. Do we have an updated number on power at this time, or, actually, frankly, the website wasn't updating yet. BC Hydro's website wasn't updating anymore.
That's correct. We don't have updated information from BC Hydro.
If you go on the website, it still says that this building is out of power, so, yeah, they haven't been updating throughout the course of the day. Okay, all right. Well, moving on with the regular business of the evening, we have item 8.1. This is bylaws 8670 rezoning to enable two-lot subdivision, 1250 West Keith. This item is just simply up for adoption, not for debate, and so will a member of council move a motion, moved by councillor Back, seconded by councillor Hanson. Okay, and there's no debate on adoption, so I'm prepared to call the question. All those in favor, contrary minded, motion is carried. Okay, the next item up for discussion is the 2025 council meeting schedule. I will move adoption of it. That's the 2025 council meeting council is approved, and so not just seconded by councillor Murray. The only comment I'll make about this is that I think we're going to have to watch the federal election dates closely because one of the most likely dates is October 21st of next year, and we do have a council meeting scheduled for the 21st. And so I think we need to keep an eye on that and maybe move our meeting around as necessary to do that, but I couldn't find any other conflicts that I noted, other than, you know, we do sometimes do an event with the Slaywood Tooth Nation the day before the Trues and Reconciliation Day, and so this would have a council meeting the day before, but it's usually in the daytime versus in the evening. But other than that, I couldn't find any other conflicts. Were there any other concerns or that council found, looking through the schedule? Councillor Pope?
Not really a concern, but a comment, actually. I was wondering if we might be interested in taking a look at having council meetings start at six to be followed by the workshops or closed meetings after the council meeting. I think it might be beneficial to many families and, and other people in general to come to council at 6:00 PM so that they can still get the kids home and time to put them to bed or whatever. And, and I think it would be beneficial for us as a council just to start earlier and to have the workshops or closed meetings start after that. Because so often, as you know, when we go into a closed meeting, we end up going late or everything's really rushed, and and we keep people here waiting at seven and such. And so I, I, I think it's an idea worth exploring, and I would just ask if we could, if we could, you know, not decide tonight, but to consider it in the future.
No, I think that's, that's fair. I mean, I'm happy to have the discussion with council. I kind of found the opposite, though. Like, we had four kids, although we've had a lot of family support, and so, you know, I know some people have challenges getting daycare at different times and such, but, but I found it that the later start actually helped me with my work schedule to be able to go home first and do stuff and then come out to a workshop in the evening, but I hear your point. We'd love to have a discussion about it, and perhaps we can make sure that the clerk brings that up the next time we have an opportunity for an open discussion with council on that. That'd be good. But on the matter before us today, any other comment on it? Prepared to call a question? All in favor, contrary minded, motion is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item up for discussion is item 8.3. This is the update to electric vehicle charging infrastructure policy for new construction. And for commentary from staff first, would you like to open this up first?
Certainly, your worship. So updating our EV charging infrastructure policy for new construction was a key action item that was identified in the EV strategy that council adopted earlier this year, and Mr. Wright has a short presentation. If there's time, just to provide a bit of an overview of what's been proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Mr. Wright?
Of the public, this presentation outlines proposed updates to the district's electric vehicle charging infrastructure policy for new construction. District is taking action in six key areas to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, to protect and enhance our environment, and improve our resilience to climate change. Proposed updates support the transition to low-carbon transport. This work advances specific actions identified in the electric vehicle strategy and aligns with several of the district's strategic plans. The electric vehicle strategy identifies access to charging as a key barrier in the transition to low-carbon mobility. The passenger vehicle sector represents 52% of emissions in the district. Electrification of passenger vehicles is part of a broader approach to reducing emissions that includes active and shared transportation initiatives. Last year, over one-third of new vehicles sold in the district were electric vehicles. The increasing demand for charging is driven in part by provincial and national legislation requiring only passenger vehicles to be electric by 2035. The district has been encouraging electric vehicle charging infrastructure for new residential and non-residential buildings through rezoning for approximately 10 years, with most recent update in 2021. The proposed approach formalizes the district's EV charging standards by moving them from the existing rezoning policy into the zoning bylaw. The proposed update enables EV-ready parking in new homes, hotels, for car-share vehicles, and in additional non-residential parking spaces. Formalizing the district's requirements in the zoning bylaw is consistent with best practices in the region, including the municipalities on the North Shore and the city of Vancouver. This approach aligns with new housing legislation to ensure that future developments are EV-ready, whether a rezoning is needed or not, and provides greater certainty for industry. Should council choose to proceed with the recommendations, staff will return to council at a later date for formal consideration of first reading.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Back. Is that from before, or you're moving recommendation? Go ahead.
Thanks. I'll move the recommendation.
Thank you. Seconded for the recommendation, seconded by councillor Ma. Councillor Back, your comments?
Thank you, your worship. This really is formalizing a policy that we already have in place and enshrining it in the zoning bylaw so that we continue to see charging infrastructure be put in new, new builds, and I think it's really important. It is one of the key actions of the EV strategy. The challenge still exists with older buildings. I know that's, you know, something that we need to really be continuing to look at as well. I don't know if you have any comment on that, just about older buildings and the challenge there and how we can potentially address that.
Yeah, thank you, dear worship, to councillor Back. Yeah, so existing multifamily buildings are kind of a key sector that the EV strategy kind of identifies for other kind of parallel complementary work. So, for example, things like supporting public EV charging next So, for example, things like supporting public E V charging next to or near existing multifamily buildings. Or better connecting residents of multifamily buildings to existing rebates, for example, are some of the actions we're pursuing.
Yeah, because I know that is that is a challenge is. Experienced pressure on the limited public charging infrastructure that we have, but certainly when we're looking at new buildings, hotels. I do think it makes sense to just have that in as a requirement. Thank you.
Very much.
Councillor Ma. Thank you for this report. Just have a couple of quick questions. I noticed in twenty twenty one. Twenty percent of non residential parking spots were to be, you know, charged ready. And then the proposal calls now for forty five percent. Could you help explain that?
Sure. Yeah. So thank you for the question, dear worship to councillor. That's correct. So. I believe it was twenty fourteen when we. Sorry, when that twenty percent requirement for non residential parking spaces was introduced. And. Yeah, so this would update that to forty five percent of of non residential parking spaces. And that's generally in response to kind of. One of the insights from the E V strategy is kind of the need for to to provide more support for workplace charging. Such really ensure that staff and folks that are visiting those workplaces are able to get a charge if they need it.
Okay. You know, this for disclosure, I have an E V vehicle. But, you know, there are times when there's other new technology or hydrogen. I just. We're putting a lot into. E V ready. I just hope that. There is enough electricity down the road to. Power all these cars. That's one concern that I have now. When I start hearing that, you know, we're going to need a couple more sight see dams to be able to have all the vehicles electrified. As a second comment or question. This recently, I think the district started charging at some of their public. Charge station. Do you have any feedback on how that's been as that dropped off usage or like I just curious to know. What's happened because of that?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, dear worship to councillor Ma. My understanding is that there was initial drop off. Once we implemented the the fees for charging, but that it's kind of continuing to.
Okay.
Through your worship, one of the reasons that we did implement the the fees was just because the congestion that we were seeing at the stations where folks just couldn't get on and. And it's really a great tool in order to manage access to make sure that those folks that are living in those existing multifamily buildings that need. That charging can can actually access the charging and you don't have this sort of free ridership of folks that might have already access at home. And so we have seen a bit of a drop off, but we are experienced and what we see in other jurisdictions is that it does recover over time and. And as as Mr. Wright mentioned, every year we see more and more conversions in terms of the overall passenger fleet. To electric vehicles. So we're not concerned about any kind of overall long term drop off in demand. There's some, there's going to be the need to add additional charging. In fact, so and it's a great tool for managing it. And recovering the costs as well.
Thank you. I thank you very much. I'm just some of my own comments on the matter. I mean. When Bill forty four came in, I think one of the unintended consequences was that the overriding power it had over regulations on parking spaces. And so. I I don't think it was intended to meddle with our ability to produce car share spaces or electrical, electric vehicle infrastructure. And I know they gave a very intentional specific exemption for accessible parking that we could still regulate that in there, but. But it, you know, I think it was an unintended consequence in it that it captured what we had been doing for many years in the electrical. Infrastructure side for charging vehicles. So I I just want to be clear. We used to do that under zoning. We've lost the ability to do it under zoning. So now we're able, sorry, under rezoning. Now we're just doing it as a base requirement of our bylaws. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I guess where I want to make sure that we're in the right. Spot on this is how prescriptive do we need to be about the connectivity of the technology? We have a development that came forward. I think it was, it's been completed now for about four or five years. And in it, they complied with our electric vehicle charging infrastructure. But did it in a way that nobody can use it, meaning they produced. Electric vehicle charging stations that don't have a cable. Attached. So the only way you could use it is if you brought your cable from home, rather than obviously the much more common and popular, which is that there is a cable at the charging station. You pull up and just attach the provided cable. So how prescriptive do we need to be to make sure that that doesn't happen again, that you produce a whole wall of electric vehicle spaces with no cables on it? That the average user isn't going to be able to use.
Thank you for the question, through your worship. Yes, we are aware of some of those cases where developers kind of. I guess we're initially kind of thinking through a variety of technologies to meet the standard of level two charging. I think kind of ten years ago, when we introduced that requirement, there was a lot of technologies that were able to kind of meet that standard. However, now it's kind of converging around a particular type of technology. So rather than providing an electrical outlet. It would mostly be a junction box, which would enable kind of most types of E V chargers. That's typically what's happening these days is what we're seeing. Either the junction box or the actual hardwiring of a E V charging station.
So at this point, it's not prescriptive of the actual connection to the car. It's only prescriptive to the box on the wall.
Yeah, so it would be so that the proposed policy is requires an energized outlet, which could be a junction box or receptacle at this point. Yeah.
I don't know that that satisfies the concern, though, that someone could still produce one that is a non standard and doesn't actually charge the by far the most common cars. And so what what can we do from a regulatory standpoint to make sure that? The electrical infrastructure we're committing to can actually serve the vast majority of cars, which have come to a fairly standardized block.
Yeah, through your worship, if I'm able to just jump in there. We did, I think, in the very early days of the policy, we saw some of these technologies. I think at the time it was a technology that was very well suited to Teslas, for example. And, you know, because that was sort of the dominant E V at the time. I think that was that drove the decision of, you know, in in one example, one particular developer to install that kind of technology. We're not seeing that now. We're seeing that there's actually quite an incentive for. Particularly for what we call the opportunity charging, which is in the public spaces, which is where, you know, folks are coming for retail and whatnot. We're seeing that there's actually quite a quite an incentive for those projects to provide and to. Charge users for charging and that generally those projects are putting in the the chargers themselves. We've seen very few examples where. There there's been any any issues at all. I will note that the way that we do define now in this updated policy, I think that. The development that you're thinking of was prior to the last iteration of the policy. So it would have been kept by the updated definite. It would have been addressed by the updated definition of what we call level two charging, which references the J seventeen seventy two standard, which is a fairly. Common standard that can be used across a wide variety of vehicles. So we don't really anticipate it to be an issue moving forward. However. Of course, like anything, we're always going to be implement or monitoring the implementation and making sure that if we do need to make any. Wording adjustments or be a little bit more prescriptive, as you do suggest, we'll certainly do that and we'll have that opportunity even as soon as next year when we're amending the zoning bylaw.
No, I don't just don't want to repeat that that mistake in the future. It wasn't the CADMO standard or C S or or J twenty. If it just by not providing a cable. They didn't meet any of those standards. And so. It's a. I think it's a lost opportunity. I just don't want to see it repeated. And then maybe we can have a discussion about how we correct it going forward, but that obviously wouldn't be the subject matter for the bylaw by law. I'm sorry, the zoning bylaw reconsideration at this time. I'm supportive of the recommendation. Councillor Pope, your comments?
Thank you. Just quickly, I'm wondering about how this policy might impact affordability. For example, what about buildings that where there are non market units or social housing transitional housing? Where, you know, those residents most certainly will not be driving E Vs. So would it would this also would this bylaw apply to those buildings or could they be exempted?
Thank you, dear worship to councillor Pope. So they would be required to kind of abide by this policy. The policy exists currently under our rezoning policy, so they typically are providing that E V ready charging infrastructure for multifamily residential buildings.
Is that something we could look at in the future to make sure that we're not taking away from affordable homes, affordable units to make way for. E V charging in a building where E V charging may never be used, or it would be extremely minimal. So.
Yeah, through your worship to councillor Pope, it's an interesting question. I think the challenge that we have is that we want to make sure that these buildings that are being built today are future proofed for the next, you know, fifty, one hundred years. And while it is a small upfront. Incremental cost. I will note that the policy doesn't require any actual stations to be added at this time. So a housing provider could choose to add the stations. Ten years later, when there was sufficient demand and where the vehicle stock had turned over to the extent that the majority of the tenants would at that time likely be driving E Vs. So it's really more about. Future proofing because there's no, you know, as we've seen the challenges with some of our existing multifamily residential buildings. The cheapest time to do it is at the time of construction. It becomes very challenging to retrofit. So. It's a fairly small incremental cost at the time of construction. So I feel it's it's and and again, as I said, you know, the the charging stations themselves aren't required. So. What we're aiming for is just to have that, you know, have that in done at the time of construction so that you can future proof for for future. Guys, I can repeat if you'd like.
Getting a lot of feedback through the microphone system, something unfortunately we'll have to fix when we're not running a meeting, but. Do you have any additional comments, Ms. Jackson, or?
No, hopefully, most folks were able to get what most.
Very important, Mark, be obviously that we're the the legislation is contemplating the whole life of the building and future proofing the building as well. Councillor Pope, did you have any additional comments? Okay, I see no further speakers on the matter. I'm prepared to call the question. All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion is carried. Thank you very much for your presentation. The next item up for consideration is item eight point four, this provincial housing target progress reporting for the district North Vancouver, covering the period of October first, twenty twenty three to September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. So first year of the program, Mr. Milburn.
Thank you very much, Mayor Little. Good evening, Mayor Little, members of council. In September twenty twenty three, the province issued the district with a housing target order. The housing target for the district is two thousand eight hundred and thirty eight net new complete units in five years from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight. The district's target for the first year of the order from October first, twenty twenty three to September thirtieth, twenty twenty four is four hundred and ninety nine net new complete units. The order also requires the district to prepare and submit progress reports, which is attached as item eight point four in tonight's agenda. The progress report outlines the number of completed housing units as well as actions taken by the municipality that were aligned with meeting the target. The district has achieved the first year's target by one. Five hundred units were approved and complete in the first year. In addition, over the last twelve months, district council has undertaken a number of actions that are summarized in the report to help to achieve these targets. Some of which include partnering with the provincial government, Vancouver Coastal Health and nonprofit housing providers to facilitate the creation of new social and supportive housing units. And also significant changes to the single family zones in the district to accommodate secondary suites and coach houses on the same parcel. Pending resolution from council this evening, the progress report will be submitted to the minister and posted on the district's website. The next reporting period will be the end of September twenty twenty five. Thank you and staff for being able to answer questions.
Thank you very much. I'll be moving the recommendations. Your second or second by councillor Hanson. Just my comments on it. It's, you know, the, obviously, the the housing needs report came in midstream while a lot of these units were already contemplated and being created. And so it's coincidental that they lined up so accurately, but. Because they were, the target was achieved or the target was outlined after these units would have been already through their approvals process. So. There's not always going to be as tight correlation. And so it's going to be interesting to see how the province responds to that because we're not in charge of. The market forces that create the unit. And so while I know they have increasingly more demanding targets for us to reach. Again, whenever you have fluctuations in interest rates, whenever you have fluctuations in contract sub trade costs. Like right now, we're sitting at about four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot for a lot of the construction that's taking place in the district of North Vancouver. That's going to be what determines whether you hit your target or not. Not whether the district has proved enough units or created enough room in our zoning. It's going to be whether the market consumes and is prepared from the. From the very beginning and their pro forma all the way through to completion. And so many of the single points of failure along the way have nothing to do with municipal operations. And so. While I'm glad that we've exceeded the target in this particular period. It is, there are going to be times when we greatly exceed the target and there's going to be times when we don't exceed the target. And it's not going to because not going to be because of something that we've done necessarily. It's most likely going to be because of the state of the economy at the time as the primary driver for it. I did just want to address one other thing. Again, this specific report is referring to units completed. So council recently had a discussion that referred to capacity and so zoned capacity. And some of the media coverage on it, you know, I I think we probably could go back and sit down and talk about. Making that very clear distinction between the two, because some of the media content reflected that. The units we talked about last time had to be built. The units we talked about last time, that was zoning capacity. So latent zoning in some case, some cases, it's very much driven by a specific project. They come forward for rezoning. They want to build two hundred and thirty units in this one particular project, and that would account for additional density within in the area. But in, but as we heard in the presentation, in most cases, it's going to be about revisioning town centers and revisioning distribution of units. Ahead of a specific proposal so that we have the capacity within our zoning for that to take place without requiring a rezoning. And so. I think it's important when the media covers this topic going forward that we make an exaggerated, very clear effort to say the difference between those two pieces because they could give the public a very different impression. So at at this point, I will be supporting preceded this. I know it's going to be a challenge even just meeting the one for next year. But will you do a quarterly update on that? Or are we really going to wait until the very end of the year to get an update on whether we've met that target or not?
Your worship, thank you for the question. The district publishes monthly updated information on the approvals as well as in stream applications. I recently shared that link with a couple of members of council who inquired. Happy to share that with all of council so council can keep track of progress as we go along. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Councillor Hanson is the second. Did you have additional comments?
Not too many, but if I could just ask a question to begin with. The housing order, which was four hundred and ninety nine units, it also had some non binding. Recommendations with respect to the breakdown of the units that we create. And I see that the units that we created, in fact, the five hundred units are three hundred and sixty four. These they were described in the report is three hundred and sixty four multifamily, hundred and nineteen secondary street, three coach houses and fourteen single family. Just. Do we have any understanding of how much compliance? These numbers represent to the breakdown that is the non binding breakdown of the order and going forward. Could you comment on our how we're going to? Secure, secure not. secu- secure, not secure, the breakdown that's recommend- recommended?
So thank you for the, for the question through Mayor Little. In terms of the breakdown, so the, the province, including an order that, that really was just the total number of built units, as you say, included some guidance or guidelines for, I think what's being referred to here to as the size of the unit, so the number of bedrooms and breakdown, the type of tenure, so old versus owned, and how many affordable units and supportive units are developed. In terms of the reporting, the province hasn't, has asked that we provide some information, but that's not technically part of the target. The reason was because this was the first step, this was the, the first step of setting targets that has now been superseded really by the legislation in bills forty-four, forty-six and forty-seven, which has set out a requirement for housing needs report and looking out twenty years into the future from twenty twenty-one to twenty forty-one. So that's the, the horizon has changed, and also the emphasis is provided in that housing needs report that council recently considered and approved in terms of the type and tenure of units. I think what will be very important going forward is council's discussion around the OCP and the zoning bylaw amendments. In particular, the use of tools such as inclusionary zoning to ensure affordability as well as rental tenure zoning to control tenure, as well as the size of units could be part of the new zoning bylaw amendments. So council will be able to give specific guidance on these range of opportunities as part of that zoning bylaw and official community plan update in twenty twenty-five, when we consider the potential for twenty-two thousand, approximately four hundred units of zoned capacity. So I, I really would emphasize council's deliberations in that regard because it will set out the regulations to ensure the tenure and type of housing is in the form that council expects going forward over that twenty-year horizon. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I won't say too much more, except I am pleased that we've met the target. Going forward, as Mayor Little said, I mean, the market is going to determine more than anything, how many, we don't build anything. So all we do is zoning, so the market's going to determine what gets built. I will keep saying, when we talk about adding to units and adding to population, we have to talk about all kinds of infrastructure, transportation, health infrastructure, educational infrastructure, recreational infrastructure, and really defining the number of housing units in isolation from those other factors that can, can I think eventually become an artificial process for our community. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, councillors Ma and Muri.
Thank you for the update, Mr. Milburn. Just following up on Mayor Little's comment that the district is not ultimately responsible on when units get built. It takes about two to three years for a project to be built. Seems like we really need to get these in-stream units or new projects through the DP and the BP process by next year to have them count towards the target of, and or September twenty twenty-eight, allowing the two to three years. That could be very tight. I recognize that, as you said, the district has taken some actions, including DAPR. Could you remind us when some of the DAPR changes will be implemented? And what impact hopefully they'll have?
Thank you, your worship to councillor Ma. A, a number of changes have already occurred, including a delegation of certain variance permits, which is, as we reported to council previously, had a thirty percent improvement in terms of processing times. We've also made a number of other initiatives that were summarized in, in reports to council. As I mentioned, I think at the last council meeting, council will be receiving an information update report on the DAPR process shortly. It's expected that we'll continue to define and achieve improved targets through our continuous improvement model for the issuance of permits. I think the important point for tonight's discussion is that if council proceeds with the rezoning of twenty-two thousand four hundred units, that in a large way takes away the, what I would call discretionary decision-making around the developments. By the time the lands are zoned, it really comes down to complying with guidelines and standards, which is not a discretionary decision of the district. If a developer pays the fee, submits a complete application and can demonstrate that met the minimum standards, the permit is issued and must be under law, and that would be either a development permit or a building permit. So it's really beholden on us to continue down the road that DAPR has sent us to report back to council on the improvements that are and will continue to be made in terms of processing times. And I would say, based on the information shared in tonight's report, there is a high likelihood we will achieve the targets that the province has set for us in the five years. In part because we actually have a number of units under construction right now, and the timeline is really based on how quickly the developers can align their labor and materials to complete their project and bring it to marketplace in those circumstances. So I, I'm, I'm speaking with relatively high level of confidence we'll be able to achieve the targets the province has set.
I guess I get a little concerned when I just talk to some colleagues in the industry that there, there is, you know, there's some pause, there's many reasons for them to take a pause right now, so. Like I said, it's going to be the market and a whole bunch of other factors beyond our control that impact on how fast they get built, but I guess we'll do our part to make sure that it's not processed holding them up.
Yes, your worship, and just to echo that point, absolutely, my, my comments were with respect to the processing speed of staff. We do not control the market, interest rates and numerous other things. And we have seen fluctuation of demand in the past. We will see it again in the future. As the mayor has mentioned, there will be years where we have significant demand and others where we have significant potential lack of demand due to market forces. I guess the key point in tonight's conversation is that once we have the lands, twenty-two thousand four hundred units pre-zoned in essence by next year, the rate or rapidness of how that development occurs will be principally market-driven.
And to some degree, process-driven, which is to say that we're administering the provincial government's process on environmental, electrical, mechanical, fire, all of the different codes that are set by the provincial government that add to the soft costs and design time at the front end of a project. If I may. Thank you, councillor Muri.
Thank you, Mayor Little. There's, there's just so much on these items when they're brought forward in regards to these housing targets. The artificial process, as councillor Hanson points out, I, I think that's a very articulate way of describing it. Because I think the market determined prior to the legislation when housing would be built, and it will determine when housing will be built after the legislation. Projects can take two, three, five years, even longer, once a developer has decided to begin building. But zoning is not an indicator that anything will start to be built. Zoning is just land use and what you can put on that property. So once we zone, well, prior to the legislation, we had, we lost control. If we, if we slowed the zoning, we still remain in control in order to determine how we were going to provide the community with the infrastructure needed. And we've lagged horribly behind the needed infrastructure, just the transportation infrastructure, the Second Arrows Bridge, the bus infrastructure that both parties committed to during the election. Now we will hold their feet to the fires to bring those monies to the table. But then even when you do have the money, you still have to have the geography to be able to implement the type of land we need to accommodate the rapid bus. And that's going to take a significant amount of work, as Mayor Little talked about. And certainly the costs of replacing a bridge, you know, it's going to be a, a, an enormous amount. Interest rates, cost, labor, all of those things contribute, the code that changes every two years, the building code, provincial guidelines, and we've got four projects of social housing. One that was zoned ten years ago, I think that's the, you know, I think it's longer than that. You know, I go by councils, so that was a few councils ago, two mayors, three mayors ago. You know, we were the same one, but the, not the one at the beginning of that project. So, you know, I think this, as the years go by, there's going to be a recognition that this isn't going to work. It will always come down to the economy, money and the market and how we will determine the kind of housing. We are all very different too, our municipalities. It's much easier to build in areas like Surrey, for instance, than it is when you're building on the side of a mountain and having to deal with floodplains and water everywhere. So, yeah, it's, and I, and I think that the, the information that's been pointed out is that we have reached these targets because almost, and I, I can, I think I can remember a couple, almost every application that comes across the desks of this council, there is a majority in favor of moving ahead with those applications. Very few development applications have been rejected by this council, and if they have, they've always come back and then they've been approved, some with increased density. So, yeah, we'll see how this works out. I think it's going to be an artificial process, as councillor Hanson points out.
Good, councillor Muri, I see no further speakers at this time. Prepared to call the question. All in favor, receive. Matter is passed. Thank you very much, council. Okay, moving on to item eight point five. This is the call for a public inquiry of the North Shore wastewater treatment plant. That's right, and we had a member of the public signed up to speak at the item, and so I believe it was Mr. Tevan. So, welcome, if you come up to the table here, when you're ready, you have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you, your worship. Peter Tevan, nineteen hundred block Indian River Crescent. I first want to address you in my capacity as vice-chair of the Seymour Community Association. Seymour Community Association is one of the member associations of NSNA. And as such, we have endorsed the motion calling for a public inquiry. I've got a copy of the letter here that was crafted, drafted by our board, and I'll leave it in the tray to be forwarded on to council. One of the further requests that the Seymour Community Association has is that NSNA be given intervenor status at any public inquiry to be able to speak during that, that event. North Shore Neighborhoods Alliance, yeah. It is the first group or committee that has assembled representation from the city of North Vancouver, district of North Vancouver and the district of West Vancouver, who all have common interest with regard to the sewage treatment plant. I now pivot to speak on my own behalf as an individual and not on behalf of any organization that I volunteer for. I, sorry, this is part of my past presentation on this. Tonight, what I want to address is the subject of the North Shore wastewater treatment plant debt. And I have significant concerns about this, and I'll leave these slides in the tray for you to go through. But specifically, what I want to focus in on is the community charter section one seventy-four that established limits on, on the amount of debt that municipal governments, regional government, regional governments can take on. And also in section one seventy-five, it makes explicit that if debt is for a period of five years or more, there are many conditions under which you need to have a referendum of the electoral. Now, I can tell you, there's a copy of a letter here that I sent to the local government, infrastructure, finance branch of the B C government in September eighteenth. And I'll leave a copy in the tray, that letter, to them. I had a number of questions that I asked them, surprise, surprise, zero response, zero even acknowledgement of receipt of my letter. And I would really appreciate if district staff endeavor to answer the questions in that letter. And these are the questions, is, has the municipal inspector approved, approved the debt of three point eight six billion minus the contributions from the federal and provincial government? Will this debt fit within our existing parameters and portfolio? And how will this debt affect the overall debt load of municipal finance authority? I am very concerned about that. I also want to point out the fees that are being prescribed. This is a chart I created for a number of houses, but I couldn't get data for a number of houses for the Fraser, the Lulu Island and the Vancouver Sewerage area. So my calculations are out there, but I can tell you with three hundred or five hundred and eighty dollars a house for fifty, thirty years, it far exceeds what we have been led to believe is North Shore's share. So I believe that there is an obfuscation of operational costs, capital costs, which is expressly against generally accepted accounting principles. And for that reason, I think a public inquiry is the minimum we should do. Probably have to wrap it up, I have plenty more I could say if you have questions.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay. At this point, it is councillor Pope's.
Here's my slides.
Thank you so much. Councillor Pope's motion, or would you like to introduce it and move your motion, please, and we'll see if there's a seconder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, my motion is that council request the province of B C to hold a public inquiry into the North Shore wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you. Is there a second on the matter? Councillor Hanson, thank you. Councillor Pope, your comments on the matter, please.
Thank you again. About eight months ago, late on a Friday afternoon in March, Metro Vancouver put out a press release. And buried in that release was the mention that the North Shore wastewater treatment plant would now cost three point eight billion dollars. That was the first time I became aware of the staggering cost of the project, and most of us on council were shocked. This project was originally estimated at seven hundred million dollars and was supposed to have been built by now. It is now five times the original amount set in twenty eighteen and a decade behind schedule. It's hard to overstate what an enormous mess this is and the significant impact it will have on taxpayers, especially on the North Shore. We now know it will cost us much more than the other municipalities, seven hundred and ninety dollars for thirty years, starting next year. But we still don't know what went wrong and why taxpayers are now on the hook for massive cost overruns. The public deserves answers. That is why I'm calling on the province to launch a public inquiry and asking for this council's support so we can understand what went wrong and ensure it doesn't happen again. Significantly, a public inquiry is needed to maintain public trust in Metro Vancouver. Trust that our taxes are being used effectively. Right now, we don't know if this mess was the result of fiscal mismanagement or if there was something wrong with the governance model at Metro or whether the ball was dropped after Axiona was fired with no follow-up plan and no work done on the site for three long years. So we need to ensure that the governance and management practices at Metro are thoroughly examined to prevent future fiscal mismanagement on large-scale public infrastructure projects, such as the planned ten billion dollar Iona wastewater treatment plant. A public inquiry will provide transparency, accountability and recommendations to the government. This afternoon, I had the good fortune to talk to former attorney general Wally Opal, who has presided over five public inquiries in B C. In his words, "A public inquiry is, quote, 'a hell of an idea to get to the bottom of what went wrong with the project.'" And he mentioned the public inquiry into serial killer Willie Pickton that focused on the police failure to investigate so many missing women. Mr. Opal said, "The Pickton case is a prime example where more evidence came out in the inquiry than in the trial." But the metro boards process. But the metro boards' processes and decisions have been shrouded in secrecy. The justification pertains to lawsuits with the contractor. But this culture of secrecy continues today in how Metro conducts itself and its accountability, and that needs to change. A public inquiry will provide a forum to probe beyond the scope of an audit or a review. Its recommendations will help ensure the successful completion of the wastewater treatment plant and create a more transparent, accountable, and effective Metro Vancouver. I hope I have your support, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Hanson, your comments?
Thank you very much, and I, I don't have too much to add to those very articulate thorough comments of councillor Pope. Just dealing though with the four billion, we hear this figure, it's gone from seven hundred million to four billion. From my point of view, we don't have any confidence that it even will fall within four billion. I spent some of the weekend reading the lawsuit that Axioni is bringing against Metro. There's significant claims made there and significant damages sought. We also heard from Mr Bancroft when he made his presentation today about the costs of deconstruction of the current plant and the current site. So let us hope it is four million dollars, billion, let us hope it is four billion dollars. From my point of view, the, the financial aspects are terrible, of course, they're terrible for residents in the North Shore and taxpayers. But above and beyond all that, the public deserve answers as to what went wrong. They deserve to know what was decided, when and by whom. Who is responsible for this outcome? Why did seven hundred million become something more likely than four billion? What needs to change to ensure such errors do not occur again? Are there issues, as councillor Pope said, in the management or governance of Metro that contribute to these errors on a systemic basis? Very, very much look forward to our advocacy to the provincial government. I very much hope that the provincial government will appoint a commissioner to engage in a proper public inquiry. And I know that from my point of view, in my community outreach, talking to the people that I've met on the North Shore or within the district, they're not going to rest, putting aside all the financial issues, they're not going to rest until they know what went wrong, who were the decision makers, and what were the points of decision that led to this very poor outcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Hanson, councillor Buck?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Little, thank you very much councillor Pope for all of your work in preparing this report and bringing forward the motion that we now have on the floor, which I fully support. Rarely a day goes by when somebody doesn't come up to me or call me or email me or text me and ask what is happening with that wastewater treatment plant. And it's become, it's become a bit of a joke, but it is no joke. It's, it's one of the most massive projects that, you know, our region has seen. And, and these conversations usually lead to the question, well, how did, how did we get here? What happened? Who is to blame? And most importantly, as, as has been highlighted by my colleague councillor Hanson, what needs to change? What needs to change so that a massive failure like this cannot happen again? And I think as much as the financial piece is extremely important, I think, I think the most important thing is, is how we got to this point and figuring out, you know, what does need to change so that it doesn't happen again. And I, of, of, you know, all of the things that we could be doing, I think a public inquiry into this makes the most sense. Having the province take a leading role, they have the authority to make the sort of recommendations and, and changes that may indeed be necessary so that this doesn't happen again. So again, not too much more to say in terms of how we got to this point because there, there is so much out there already. But I would truly like to see this happen as a next step, and thank you councillor Pope for, for bringing this forward.
Thank you very much, councillor Muri.
Thank you, Mayor Little. So I, I'm happy to support this motion as well. It was similar to an amendment that I made during a board meeting on the rep for the District of North Vancouver on the metro board. And I asked that the province conduct a review based on the North Shore wastewater treatment plant, and that was supported by the board. We were then informed, it was a public meeting by the mayor of Burnaby, our chair Mike Hurley, that he had reached out personally to the premier and asked that the provincial government undertake a review of the North Shore wastewater treatment plant, in which time the premier declined and said that he felt that it was Metro's responsibility to look into this project on their own, and if he was not satisfied or the province wasn't satisfied, they would move forward and undertake a subsequent review. This has been asked, as was pointed out by Mr Bancroft from the Blue Ridge Community Association. Several municipalities have passed these motions in their councils. Prior to the election, Metro Vancouver asked twice for the province to undertake this review. Metro Vancouver, the board, and I'm, you know, this is the, the board wants, the, the most arms-length did not want to take on the responsibility of the, of the review because we understand the optics of that. It's very difficult to review yourself. It's like when we have to approve our increases in our indemnification, it's a very awkward place to put yourselves in, but we are responsible for the budget, so that's why under the legislation, we are required to make those decisions. So of course, we did not want to have any part of that. But the province declined, they declined multiple times in the media. And now that the, the election is over, maybe there is a second thought, so maybe, I think this is good timing. I think all the other motions were brought forward prior to the election. This one is one that stands out after the election, so we'll see if there's a change of heart and if they would like to move forward. But Metro did agree, the board wanted to have this review done. Our new chair, Mayor Hurley, has committed to that. John Hunter Casey has been retained to bring forward the terms of reference for the review that Metro is going to be undertaking. And it is going to be, the board will be making that decision. And whether you want to call it an audit or review or inquire, we are going ahead with something. And I just wanted to also, Mayor Little, just comment on the issue, because there are two different issues, what led us to this place, how did we get here? But then the amount of money that was allocated to North Shore residents, and those are two very different things. So the allocation happened during a board meeting and in which the three municipalities, the District of West Vancouver, the City of North Ban, and the District of North Ban moved four motions to request that the board allocate. Our original ask was a forty dollar hit to the, to the other sewage districts, there's four in the region. And the majority of the board declined the forty dollars. So then we moved to thirty, and they declined that, twenty, they declined that, and finally they agreed to give us a ten dollar amount that could be applied to the North Shore resident, to the North Shore. Under the structure of Metro Vancouver and the sewage area, the host municipality or the, the municipalities of the North Shore will pay roughly forty-eight percent of the costs, and the rest of the region will pick up the remainder. And many, many years ago, before I was elected, before nineteen ninety-six, there was a discussion at Metro Vancouver to have the sewage area district become one, like water, for instance. Water is one area. And at the time, the North Shore declined to take part in one sewage district, they wanted to remain on their own. And the rationale at the time was that the North Shore was not growing, so they did not want to pick up any more of the costs for other areas like Vancouver or Surrey that were growing at the time. And so I think there was part of that, there was, that, that entered into the debate. You weren't willing to help us forty years ago, and now you're asking us to help you now. So there was a little bit of that. You know, we took the position on the North Shore that this was an extraordinary cost, nothing that the municipalities had done. This was a, an issue between the contractor and Metro Vancouver, and decisions had been made to release them from the work. And here we find ourselves in this very challenging place. The board continues to work towards finding a way to reduce that amount for the Minus, for the North Shore. And we continue to communicate and work towards finding a solution to the allocation. I am, I'm going to remain optimistic that we can continue to communicate with our colleagues in Metro Vancouver, Burnaby, Surrey, Langley, and show them how challenging this is for us. And I'm going to remain optimistic that we may be able to get there. So I'll leave it at that, and thank you for the extra time, it's a complicated process.
Thank you, councillor Muri, councillor Ma.
Thank you. I just have a little bit to add. I support my council colleagues, councillor Pope's motion to ask the province to launch a public inquiry. We do need to know what happened and why. I suspect that there will be a lot of technical issues that will come up, and I hope the inquiry will tackle those so that the average person can understand them. Failing that, I'll have to ask Mr Rose Innes to help explain the things to me. At the same time, you know, we talk about, you know, what happened and the responsibility and holding people accountable. I get all that, we want to make sure that this doesn't happen again. But I am, at the same time, also concerned what to share that the North Shore residents have been forced ass to pay, and I, you know, I think hopefully something comes of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ma, councillor Forbes.
Thank you, your worship. I was shocked when this, we finally learnt in May, what the price was, because I recall back when I was first running to be on council, that I was pushing everybody to consider tertiary at the time because it wasn't mandated yet by the federal government. The cost was going to jump a hundred million, and everybody was aghast. A hundred million, no, we can't do that. And then it became tertiary, and so it was mandated, and so that's how we started into this. So to go from, understanding how the people felt about just a hundred million increase to go to four billion is just insane. So I support the motion, and thank you for bringing it forward councillor Pope. And I think we really do, as everybody's already said, we need to know, need to know how we got into this spot. And the primary thing we need to do is try to resolve this kind of excessive cost to the North Vancouver taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Forbes. You know, so it's, it's such a huge issue and, and a massively impactful issue for our community. We're talking about twenty-three thousand dollars per household over the next thirty years of expenditures that we're going to be contributing in our part. And I know the metro region was shocked on Friday to learn that Metro's rates are going to go up by twenty-five percent, due in large part due to their portion of the contribution to the North Shore wastewater treatment plant. And so this is an extremely frustrating process all around. If I was to put it into three buckets, though, I would talk about, first, what to do going forward, the allocation question, how you're going to pay for it, as being sort of one group of things to investigate and, and have as a bucket. Second is, what things are generic and generally found within the industry right now? We're seeing massive increases throughout the system, whether it's Site C, Surrey Memorial, U B C Extension. You know, going back to, I remember the discussion when, when Premier Horgan had to talk about the shocking cost increases for the Royal B C Museum. And, and so that bucket is going to, it needs to focus on the question of, how are we going to deliver civil infrastructure going forward in this new environment? But the, the inquiry, I think, should be spending a, a bunch of time on this last bucket, which is the things that are unique to this project. So not the cost escalation, not the, not the, the construction escalator after, after the, after Covid and the challenges with securing trades and all of that, that's something that's commonly held with all of the other projects. I'm really wanting them to dig down into what's unique about the North Shore wastewater treatment plant, the procurement process, the first contractor, the state we were in at the end of the first contractor, well, how Metro Vancouver came to the decision to, to end partways with that contractor, and then obviously where we are into the litigation piece for there. I think that bucket is the stuff that is going to tell us the most important aspect of this, of where we are at today. I, I think we should have a broader discussion about how we're going to pay for civil infrastructure going forward. I think we should have a further discussion about single sewage district and how we can contribute in an equitable manner into the single sewage district. But I think the most important area for this is to identify stuff that was unique to the wastewater treatment plant in the North Shore. And I think that's where you're going to find some very interesting dynamics that, that took place and some things, some points and times that you can point to and say, why did we get that recommendation? Why did they vote this way? Why did that proceed the way it did? And so I am supportive of a public inquiry, not just a review, not just an audit, not just the other tools that have been suggested for it, but going to, to a higher level. And so I, I hope that the provincial government does proceed down that path. And I do think it should be independent, I think Metro Vancouver has a lot on their plate as well, and, and it would be a bit of a conflict for them to be in, in part conducting it. And so that's why I'm not happy with the current review, which leaves it entirely in the hands of Metro Vancouver. Also, I will just say, a, a number of people have been asking for there to be an audit. The challenge is, the money hasn't been spent. About seven hundred and eighty million dollars has been spent or contracted out into it, out of the three point eight six billion dollars. And so while an audit of it will reveal what's been spent and where and what's been committed to, it won't really deal with how the staff came to the advice that they did over the indicative design, how they identified contractors, how the procurement process identified the two that ended up being competing, competing against. I will actually go into my, my second time, if I may. I also wanted to address the issue of borrowing that was raised in the, in the intro. And so the District of North Vancouver, the money is not being borrowed on behalf of officially by the District of North Vancouver. The borrower is Metro Vancouver, and so Metro Vancouver is borrowing from the MFA. They have to get approval. They have to put in, put in the request to the MFA, get approval for the MFA. One of the questions was about specifically the exposure with the MFA. So the MFA currently has about ten to eleven billion, just over ten billion, in outstanding loans out on, on their behalf. And so if you take just the North Shore wastewater treatment and, and Iona when it comes on, you're going to see that number go from about ten billion up to about twenty-five billion in borrowing. And, and so the question I asked in a public meeting of Metro Vancouver, I believe it was the Water Committee from, from the October meeting, is, you know, at what point does that cause credit issues for the MFA? And the response I got back was very frustrating. The view is that because the MFA would be, have a very secured source of funding that through the forced legal utility fees that they have the ability to force out to the, to the partners, they have an unlimited ability to pay. And therefore, it would not affect a triple A credit rating, even the doubling or tripling of the amount of borrowing that they have out. And I find that to be challenging. I think if you, if you took it to its extreme, everybody would agree that if they were trying to borrow a trillion dollars, they'd say, okay, that would obviously be a problem. So let's work it back in the spectrum. What is that tipping point where all of a sudden your credit rating is at risk, which would cause this massive amount of borrowing to be, have dramatically higher costs? Apparently, it's not two and a half times what they currently borrow out or lend out. So I found that very frustrating, but I think it was a very important question that was asked at the beginning, so I just wanted to address it. I have no further speakers at this time. Prepared to call the question, all in favour, contrary-minded, motion is carried. Prepared to call the question, all in favor, contrary-minded, motion is carried. Okay, thank you, counsel. Uh that completes the business that we had contemplated for this evening's meetings. There is still some time available in the meeting if uh people would like to make reports. Uh Mr. Stewart, do you have any reports that you'd like to add to the meeting today?
Uh Your Worship, uh Mr. Cohen has provided a response in terms of the uh the the relief and the and the work that we're doing.
Which, sir?
Mr. Cohen has provided a a quick introduction to the relief, windstorms and that kind of thing, so.
At the beginning of the day, yes, yes. Did you, Mr. Cohen, do you want to touch on any of the evacuation order changes and stuff? Or I I guess I can do that if you'd like. So we did um of the original evacuation order that District North Vancouver had in the twenty-seven-hundred block panorama where there were uh six houses identified, uh the district did release uh all six of those houses from that evacuation order. Um and they have varying degrees of damage on the property, but we believe the general risk to loss of life um to the public in those spaces has been mitigated by uh adding drainage channels to the retaining walls so we can de-water that space. Uh the um that doesn't mean those houses are entirely out of the woods, those those houses still have some work to do to rebuild and uh make their houses entirely safe, but the risk to the public has been mitigated. Uh we did then uh uh complete uh that uh statement of local emergency and uh but then we we took the unusual step of creating a new statement of a local emergency and and I'm told that this does happen on a regular basis in emergencies, that as you continue to assess the community, you do find that there are other risks in the community you should be addressing. And so we made a much more general statement of local emergency at that point um uh to address the entire area from Francis Creek in the twenty-five-hundred block of panorama out to uh just beyond Ossler Creek, uh Fire Lane Two and Three of Woodlands, which, if you're familiar with the area, is a fairly large, broad statement of local emergency. And in that, we added three more houses uh for the evacuation list. We were able to, after uh some additional assessments, uh take one of those evacuation orders out and get that family back into that uh house in the twenty-five-hundred block of panorama. Um uh but we still have the ongoing concerns at the uh mouth of Ossler Creek. Uh this is between Fire Lanes Two and Three in the Woodlands area. Uh so much stone came down in that area, it'll be tens of thousands of uh cubic feet of stone. Uh I one estimate by one of the neighbors who's an engineer uh said that their mass says it's about two hundred truckloads of stone that would have to be entirely removed to restore the channel back to what it was originally. So it was a massive amount of uh uh stone and material that came down channel. And the risk there is that you lose the channel depth. Uh this actually diverted the creek because it lost the channel depth entirely, and so it created a new creek channel. Um but uh in some cases, you had a fairly consistent eight-foot channel depth, and then at the end of the event, you were down to under two feet of channel depth, and so even a moderate rainstorm at that point could have overflowed its banks, and so we did take the additional step of um uh doing an evacuation order on those houses. Work is ongoing right now to restore the channel depth in that area until we're satisfied that the risk to the public is gone, and then we will amend those agreements going forward. Mr. Cohen, do you have any additional comment on the, on that?
Yeah, Mayor Little, the only thing to add is in terms of our work at Ossler Creek, we're hoping in the coming days for that to be resolved.
And in uh at the the upper part or the lower part?
The lower portions, the two evacuated houses.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Okay, uh Counselor Beck, do you have a report to make?
Thank you, Mayor Little. On a much lighter note, uh this past Saturday, I attended with my family the eleventh annual pumpkin drop that was hosted by the District North Vancouver Firefighters uh Charitable Society down at our brand-new Maplewood Fire and Rescue Centre. Uh my kids enjoyed, uh they were happy to wait, uh because it was quite a long wait uh to get through the lineup. We had over a thousand members of the community turn out uh for this particular event. Uh but they were happy to wait to be able to climb up three stories into the training tower and drop their pumpkins. Um it was a great opportunity for the community to see this new facility, which really um was really shone. Um and I want to thank all of the volunteers who made it happen. I don't know that they were expecting quite that many people to turn up. Um but uh nobody was leaving, every volunteer was there until, until everybody got through, so big thank you to all of our our DNB firefighters uh for putting this event on. Chief Danks was there as well, and uh it was a, it was a great event. Thank you.
Very much, Counselor Beck. Counselor Murray, you have a report?
Uh thank you, Mayor Little. Um I was uh happy to join yourself and Counselor Ma at the Fire uh Rescue Centre on uh Monday, and we pushed the new quint into the bay. It's a a very old tradition, the firefighters hold an old tradition when they couldn't get the horses to back up the carriages. In the old days, um the firefighters would unhook them and then push the fire carriages into the bay, and so that's what we did. I probably could have done it myself, but few firefighters around, Counselor Ma and Mayor Little. Actually, Mr. Stewart was there in his, his uh is uh is nice suit to help us push this massive um truck into the bay, and then a new wild uh land fire um rescue truck, which um actually was out in Woodlands, and um if you know Woodlands and the Fire Lanes, uh you could never get a full-size engine down there, you have to use the smaller um trucks, so uh we were able to push that in. And then I also did uh visit uh on uh the weekend as well. I donated my pumpkin to those who wanted to drop an extra one off the top, but it was a huge success. And there was a lot of chit-chat about how, because there were so many people there, how happy they were that there was such a huge amount of parking. Uh they were a bit worried about the parking, but there is a good uh allotment of parking, so we were able to accommodate a lot of people. And then I would just wanted to, of course, remind everybody of our Remembrance Day ceremonies on the eleventh um at the Senataf, obviously in the City of North Vancouver, where the mayor will be, and then uh we've got Kate's Park and Lynn Valley. Um I think there is an event at the Legion afterwards, and um so come out and pay your respects to Remembrance Days and those fought to, who fought to give us freedom in this country.
Thank you, Counselor Murray. Counselor Ma?
Thank you. Uh last Friday night, uh representing the mayor, I attended Fans Fun for the Arts on the North Shore, uh they were holding their gala. Um as everyone knows, there are many amazing and talented artists on the North Shore, and that night we were honoring two distinguished artists. Babak uh Gokar and Marty Walchuk, so congratulations to them, and as always, it was a fun event. There was a little, little rivalry with uh West Van and uh the City of North Fan, so that's always fun, but uh it was a fun night, and they did raise um some good money, uh you know, good amount of money for the arts. Uh they wanted the top prizes was a a fishing trip on a Fraser to catch a sturgeon, catch and release, of course, but uh it's a really fun event. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Forbes.
Thank you, Worship. Um a number of us, just about the full council, attended the Edgemont Community Association. And as I see Mr. Cost in the audience, which apparently we're not going to see him quite as often, but I just want to really, really thank you for everything you do. You keep our toes to the fire when they need to be, and you're a resource whenever we can't find information. You've always got it somewhere, somehow, so I hope that you're still going to drop in once in a while, but just we really appreciate you, Mr. Cost. Thank you.
Yeah. Congratulations. Uh yeah, I'm very glad that we were able to uh be there on that night and and recognize your incredible service to the Edgemont Community Association. And uh it's now the Edgemont Community Association, not the Edgemont and Upper Capilano Community Station. I I made that mistake when I I I led off on the meeting. Uh they've changed their name again. Um but um it it's an incredible legacy of community service, and uh so I was very glad they took the time out to recognize your contribution to to that organization. Uh the other uh report I was going to give, I, we we had a little bit of fun. Uh the uh public administration uh program at uh the university decided to have a mock council meeting here, and so they were inviting people who were studying to become clerks uh to come and learn about the process live, and so uh I was the uh mayor for the event, and we had Colonel Mustard and and Captain, you know, this and that, all the different representatives from uh uh people came forward, they had written out scripts for members of the public to come and hold their government to account and created all kinds of uh tricky uh legal situations for the council to sort of figure out for us to stop and say, this is what I would do in that situation. Uh I did just want to say that it's a, it's an incredibly important role for uh the clerk uh and the mayor to be able to work very well together in the um in this situation. You can uh do a lot of damage to public confidence or a lot of good for public confidence if you have a good relationship and things are are going well, and uh and so it was a lot of fun to to be there and see these students uh learning about the process and uh for us to be able to sort of sit in the hot seat and talk about what it's like here in the District of North Vancouver. And so uh it was a great experience, and I think showed well. I I don't know if they're going to rank us with other municipalities or anything, but uh it was a a good opportunity. Uh at at this point, counsel, we have completed, oh, uh any other, you know, we've completed the business of this meeting, I'll accept adjournment, thank you, Counselor Murray. Uh thank you very much to the staff for the work they did preparing the reports for our consideration tonight. Thank you to members of public for attending, and thank you, counsel, for your decisions this evening. Everybody have a fantastic night.